We have a quorum, all members are present. At this time, we're going to ask that you would take the opportunity to silence your cellphones or turn them off so that we will not interrupt the meeting. And we also want to take the opportunity to recognize First Sergeant Carter from the Spotsylvania County Sheriff's Department for being with us this evening.[31.11][31.11](APPLAUSE). If the Assembly would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, we'd have Mr. Blain lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Blain. We have our agenda in front of us, and we have a motion to approve the agenda.
So, second?
Moved by Ms. Blaylock, seconded by Dr. Meyer.
Just a correction, moved by Ms. Shelley, just so the record's proper, thank you.
Moved by Ms. Shelley, and seconded by Dr. Meyer. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? Hearing none, the agenda is approved, 7-0. Moving on to 3.01, we do not have a public hearing on 2.01, so we're going to move on to 3.01, the performance by the Cortland High School Drama Department, Ms. Flannard.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. Tonight, our highlight is presented by Cortland High School Drama Department. The students will be performing one song from the 25th Annual Putnam County Spelling Bee. This show is a musical comedy that depicts the annual spelling bee at Putnam Valley Middle School. Flashbacks and insight reveal personal details about each of the spellers in this musical that explores the idea that winning isn't everything. The drama department is under the direction of Aaron Bradley.[140.16][140.16](MUSIC)
(SINGING) At the 25th Annual, but no county spelling bee. My parents keep on telling me, just being here is winning, although I know it isn't so.
It's a very nice, very, very nice beginning. Our winner here last year, Chef Latina, let's see what he thinks. It's pretty. And our youngest competitor, look, it's 14th already. At the 25th Annual, but no county spelling bee. Be all stand when they announce my name. And try to keep from shaking. But I'm thinking well done, because it's a very big, very possible, but it's not, it's a very big undertaking. Returning after last season's tragic setback, William Murphy. I'm not sure who this really is, Moxie Park.
(SINGING) My destination, what we can do.
Where's my secret and a fancy hotel?
Where they treat you well. All because you love to spell, we spell.
It's a marvelous dream, you've been a spelling bee. It's like the place of angels and demons, running around here. I see, she will be held by me. And where I want to go, there's something for my records. Turn around around here.
Hi, you know what I'm saying? Excuse me, I'm going to start an invisible tape.
At the 25th Annual, we're the best.
About how to spell these words, words that require thoughts. People think we're untouchable, but that is exactly what we're not.
We hear the words, we yell, we wait.
And like gals, we go.
Do any supporting the majority, it's a fake.
At the 25th Annual, but no county spelling bee. We feel like everybody's me, but it's me. We are the slightest bit bizarre, but since the time is now, hold it count. We should focus on, about to concentrate on winning. We concentrate on winning. At the 25th Annual, but no county spelling bee. We speak so day convincingly. There's always another green leaf. It seems we're living out our dreams.
Which is a very nice, very nice, very, very, very nice.
Very nice, very nice, very, very, very nice, very nice beginning. 25th Annual.
Great job, excellent, thank you. And did I mention that's from one of my favorite high schools? Did I throw that in?
I do.
And Ms. Grant said hers as well. We want to thank not only the students for their presentation, but all the teachers and instructors that prepared them for their presentation to us. What an excellent job they do, and it just gives me a great deal of satisfaction to say that our schools are more than just testing centers. There's the spirit of our growth, and those children are the very spirit of our schools and what they represent. We thank them for their performance. Moving on to recognitions, 4.01, Fine Arts Recognition, Ms. Flannard.
Thank you, Mr. Braswell. If I might add just a comment, that that show is coming up this Thursday, Friday, and Saturday night, in case our viewing audience is interested in seeing more. And also, if we could have a quick moment, if we have any of our families in the audience from any of our cast here, if you could please stand to be recognized?[520.16][520.16](APPLAUSE). Thank you for allowing me to do that, Mr. Braswell. And moving on to our Fine Arts recognition, March is Youth Art Month, and Fine Arts teachers highlight the importance of fine arts education by special activities within schools and communities. And one of the ways the visual art teachers recognize Youth Art Month is by a countywide display here at the school board office and at our recent Culture à la Carte Festival, which we'll be talking about again in a couple minutes. The pieces of artwork that you see in our boardroom and around the school board office represents 22 of our schools. These students were recognized and received certificates of appreciation at a reception that was held in their honor prior to this meeting beginning.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Flannard. Move on with 4.02.
Thank you. Tonight, we have an opportunity to recognize theater and forensics competition recognition, and we're going to do this by school, so we're going to begin with Massaponics High School, and we're going to begin with Kimberly Kemp and Stephen Singer, if those two individuals could come forward if they're here this evening.[601.16][601.16](APPLAUSE). Congratulations goes to Mrs. Kemp at Massaponics Theater Students in the Competition One Act. Massaponics placed second at conference, second at regionals, and third at states. We had Best Actor Awards for Katherine Dobbins and Riley Cooper at the conference and the regional level. If they're here, could they please come forward?[631.16][631.16](APPLAUSE). And the members of the cast, if you would please come forward as we call your name. I did recall Katherine Dobbins, as well as Riley Cooper. We have Hannah Schmedek, A.J.
Can we do two rows, make taller people in the back? Alright, everybody, look this way, one, two, three, some more, just to make sure, one,
And if we have any family members that are here that support our students in this great endeavor, could they please stand to be recognized?[817.82][817.82](APPLAUSE). And Mrs. Flannard, can you continue with 4.03, Culture à la Carte? We're, I'm sorry, Ms. Grant, I still have the forensic team and Riverbend and Chancellor. I have quite a few names to call that they're hoping that I get right this evening. For the forensic team for Massaponics that placed first at their conference for the Team Award for Original Oratory, we have Eric Benavides Rodriguez, third place.[854.25][854.25](APPLAUSE). For Storytelling, Shanaya Lewis, first place, and Carolyn Mark.[865.66][865.66](APPLAUSE). For Serious Interpretation, Katherine Dobbins, first place, and Eric Zhang.[876.63][876.63](APPLAUSE). For Humorous Interpretation, Andrew Brevick, second place, Aubrey Armstrong, third place.[889.38][889.38](APPLAUSE). Prose, Caitlin Woodford, first place, and Ashley Cabrera, second place.[902.32][902.32](APPLAUSE). Poetry, Madeline Ferlanzo, first place, and Kyra Blount.[913.32][913.32](APPLAUSE). Serious Duo Interpretation, Riley Cooper and Emily Whalen, first place, Hannah Schmedek and Kathleen West, second place.[931.04][931.04](APPLAUSE). Humorous Duo Interpretation, Jacob Thompson and Miranda Wood, first place.[945.16][945.16](APPLAUSE). As well as Lauren West and Danica Irish.[953.41][953.41](APPLAUSE). And for impromptu, Haley Moore, fourth place, Sun Park.[964.25][964.25](APPLAUSE).
Do we want to do another picture for this group?
They are different. Some are the same, but some...
Alright, ready? This way, one, two, three, some more, just to make sure, one, two, three.
And once again, if we have families in the audience, could you please stand to be Moving on to Riverbend, we have Kelly Cresswell and Samantha Gier, if they are present, if they could come forward to represent Riverbend?
Actually, they are practicing tonight.
They are practicing tonight.
So we only have one person?
Okay, thank you. We do have congratulations to Riverbend High School Theater Students who placed second at districts for A Raisin in the Sun by Lorraine Hansberry. Best Actor Award goes to Aaron Judkins, Alex Dobbins, and Angel Melvin.[1036.88][1036.88](APPLAUSE). And for the conference for the forensic competition, Riverbend High School only had three students that were able to compete this year due to multiple date changes, but one student, Ryan Lacy, took first in Original Oratory and advanced to Regionals. Is Ryan here this evening?[1061.83][1061.83](APPLAUSE). Moving on to Chancellor High School, Matthew Armentrout. Are you present this evening, Matthew? There he is.[1071.04][1071.04](APPLAUSE). Congratulations to the cast and the crew of the fall one-act play Title Voices. Their play received a rating of superior and was passed on to Regionals. And we have a tie for Best Actress in the Conference, and that goes to Taylor Patzman At Regional, Title Voices was passed on to the VHSL State Competition, and Alex Trainum was selected as one of the region's top six actors.[1116.04][1116.04](APPLAUSE). Sidney Murray was selected as one of the top four actors at the state competition. Title Voices placed second in the conference, second in the region, and fourth in the state. Cast and crew members here tonight include Sidney Murray, Alex Trainum, Taylor Knoll, is Taylor with us this evening?[1144.04][1144.04](APPLAUSE).
Let's squeeze in for a photo. There you go. One, two, three, some more, just to make sure, one, two, three.[1205.83][1205.83](APPLAUSE).
If we have any of our families from the Chancellor High School to support our Title Voices actors and actresses, if you could please stand.[1222.16][1222.16](APPLAUSE). And finally, for this section, we have congratulations to the Chancellor High Forensic Team, which won first place in the Master Sweeps Competition in the VHSL Conference. Eighteen students were passed on to Regionals, and seven were passed on to States, which will be held on April 2nd. First-place finishers at the conference included, if you could come up as you hear your name, Dre Carr, Lily Church, Abby Nichols, Taylor Patzman, Taylor Knoll, Sierra Brooks, and Ally Ruiz.[1294.83][1294.83](APPLAUSE). And Taylor won first place in her category at Regionals.[1302.33][1302.33](APPLAUSE).
One, two, three, some more, just to make sure, one, two, three.
Now, could you continue 4.03, Culture à la Carte?
Thank you, Ms. Grant. Culture à la Carte is a countywide festival celebrating music, art, and language in our community. This festival celebrates World Language Week, which is March 7th through 13th, music and theater in our schools, and Youth Art Month. This event offered performance venues for musical groups for all ages and types, exhibitions of art in public venue, and an opportunity for ESOL students to celebrate their heritage language and their culture. In addition, the day provided a collaborative environment for world language classes and clubs to share what they're learning of the language and the culture through arts, crafts, dance, music, and food with the community at large. This year was the eighth annual festival. We would like to honor the following teachers who earned their five-year participation plaque. If teachers are present, if you would come forward when we call your name to receive the plaque, please. And you're going to help facilitate that for us, Ms. Nagley? Thank you, Dr. Nagley. The teachers are: Art Teachers, Frank Carr from Spotsylvania High School, her little bird just whispered she's not here this evening. Music Teachers, sorry, thank you for Mr. Carr. Music Teachers, Melanie Bolus from Berkeley Elementary School.[1412.75][1412.75](APPLAUSE). And Chancellor Elementary School. Susan Dane, Freedom Middle School.[1429.12][1429.12](APPLAUSE). Erin Noe, Riverbend High School.[1437.16][1437.16](APPLAUSE). Kathy Pellegreen, Wilderness Elementary School.[1445.62][1445.62](APPLAUSE). Joanna Peters, Spotsylvania High School.[1453.04][1453.04](APPLAUSE). And World Language Teachers, Patricia Kacho from Massaponics High School.[1462.12][1462.12](APPLAUSE).
Take one step this way. Everybody take one step to the right. One, two, three, some more, just to make sure, one, two, three.[1492.83][1492.83](APPLAUSE).
And if we could continue with the Superintendent's Award?
Thank you. This month, the Superintendent's Award winner is Mariana Smith. Mariana is a 12th grade student at Chancellor High School. Her art teacher is Leanne Houston. Mariana's work is hanging in the Superintendent's Office for the month of March. We would like to recognize her and Ms. Houston for their art, her art teacher, and please have them come forward to be recognized for this outstanding accomplishment.[1532.83][1532.83](APPLAUSE). And if Mariana's family was able to be with her this evening, could they please stand
Ms. Flannard, thank you again for kind of overseeing our multiple awards that were given out. It's a wonderful thing, this division has been recognized for a lot of great achievements, but it's most exciting when our students are receiving the awards for their achievements. They're the reason why we exist, so we thank them for their efforts, and we are excited that we had the opportunity to show Spotsylvania County what great students we have. Moving on to 5.01, Public Comments, Dr. Martin, if you would please...
Good evening. The Public Comments segment of our board meetings is a time to receive recommendations, suggestions, concerns, and comments from the general public. Each speaker's allotted five minutes, and we ask that they clearly state the name, address, and/or voting district for the board. A speaker may request additional time from the board should one's five-minute allotment expire. We ask that you keep your comments focused on the issues, and that all speakers maintain a love of decorum and mutual respect for one another. First speaker is Alfred King.
Sort of a hard act to follow from all those students and their awards that they won. Ladies and gentlemen of the Board, I thank you for the opportunity to come before you. I am here as the incoming Chairman of the Spotsylvania Republican Party. The remarks are my own because we have not yet held an official meeting to discuss these issues. This is a very sad day in the history of Spotsylvania County. Six of your members made a totally unprovoked attack on the Spotsylvania Republican Party. In effect, you have declared war on us, falsely accusing us of actions we never took. In your letter, you went on, and I quote, "We invite the Chairman to join us at the next school board meeting and explain the committee's position." Then, when I said I wanted to meet with you, your Chairman demurred. In a subsequent phone call, he told me it was not possible for me to be on the agenda. Our only resort, I was told, was to take this public comment time. He indicated I would be granted a little more than the usual five minutes, which I am taking advantage of. Let me begin at the beginning. At the Board of Supervisors Meeting held to discuss the proposed budget, one individual made a private comment to the person next to her. She was then asked by the Speaker what was said, and she repeated her comment in response to that question. The Speaker and others attending the Board of Supervisors Meeting took exception to the comment, a comment protected by her First Amendment rights of free speech. On February 25th of the following week, at our monthly GOP meeting, at the very end of the session, your Vice Chairman suddenly spoke up. We had had no notice of her requesting time on the agenda of our meeting. She then ambushed everyone in the room by reading aloud a letter signed by six of you. She read it in front of the entire committee to try and embarrass us. With no prior notice, as innocent bystanders, we were subject to a totally unprovoked personal attack. The GOP Committee immediately voted not to accept the letter because it was totally wrong. The GOP had had nothing to do with any comments at the Board of Supervisors Meeting, and contrary to the assertion in your letter, we had no policy and no position on the issues mentioned in the letter. Your letter was, to put it simply, totally erroneous. The next day, I emailed Ms. Grant... The next day, I emailed Ms. Grant and indicated that an apology was in order because the GOP had had nothing to do with any comments or any responses at the Board of Supervisors meeting. The original comment was made by someone who identified herself loudly and clearly as representing a totally different organization. In short, at no point then or since has the GOP made any comments or taken a position on whatever happened at the Board of Supervisors meeting. We remained above this fray, wanting only to clear our good name. We never received even the courtesy of an acknowledgement, much less an apology from Ms. Grant. Note, my email to Ms. Grant was my first attempt to establish the truth and calm the troubled waters. My second attempt was a call to Dr. Baker. I told him that the Grant letter was wrong and hoped for an apology. That did not come from Dr. Baker. I then suggested that he contact your legal counsel. Dr. Baker's first reaction was, are you going to sue us? But I assured him this was the last thing in our mind. What I hoped was there a counsel, reading the letter and seeing it was totally an error, would recommend a retraction and/or apology. Note, that attempt to have your counsel intervene was my third try, and it failed. I then asked Dr. Baker for a place on the agenda of the next Board of Education meeting in exact accordance with the request in Ms. Grant's letter. He said that this would have to come from the elected members and that Mr. Braswell, your chairman, would call me. When Mr. Braswell did call me, I was nonplussed when the first thing he said was, "I understand you have some questions." I did not have any questions on the Grant letter. I only wanted to put this dispute to rest by accepting the invitation to a meeting that you yourselves had asked for, and then hearing your apology. So, once again, I asked to meet with the board, as six of you had explicitly requested. In short, even Mr. Braswell himself, by signing the letter, had said he wanted to meet with me. But when I said that I would indeed accept his invitation, he indicated that he did not know how that could be done, but would get back to me. Note, that call represented my fourth attempt to put this to rest. Last Monday, Mr. Braswell, true to his word, did call me, but indicated it would not be possible to meet with the board because according to him, there was no precedent. That conversation with your chairman represented my fifth attempt to put this to rest before my presentation tonight. He did offer me this public comment time.
Mr. King, forgive me for interrupting. I just want to let you, your five-minute allotment expired, and I will refer you to the chairman of the board if you'd like to request additional time.
Are you asking for five additional minutes, sir?
About two and a half.
Okay, do we have a motion on the floor to authorize the speaker additional time?
A move that we allow Mr. King to have additional time.
Ms. Blaylock moved, seconded by Dr. Meyer. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? Seven zero, please continue, sir.
Thank you. He did offer me this public comment time, and I thank him and you for allowing me to speak. Put yourself in our position. Ms. Grant first ambushed us with a letter that was factually wrong. Then, rather than admitting the error, you have compounded the problem by doubling down five separate times. The Republican Party over the years has endorsed, we cannot nominate, specific end dates for the Board of Education. In my 18 years in Spotsylvania, I have never detected any political bias in our endorsements. So, here we are. Let's look at the potential future consequences. In short, by refusing to acknowledge the error you made regarding the Republican Party, one of the two major political parties in the country, you have deliberately chosen to politicize education. You have declared war on the GOP. I personally do not see any alternative at this point other than to accept your challenge. It is now one minute before Armageddon. One last time, our sixth, we will still accept your apology that your letter was an error. After that, while I cannot predict the future, it certainly looks bleak for future discussions about education, pay, funding and so forth. Finally, I want to call the public's attention to your own code of ethics, which each of you signed. Point nine says, "I will refrain from using the board position for partisan gain and avoid any appearance of impropriety." My emphasis. I do not have time to elaborate on how six of you directly violated your own code of ethics, but I hope the general public does take notice. Thank you for the opportunity to express our position, and I do have copies of my presentation for you.
Our next speaker is Mr. John. And Mr. John, I apologize, but I'm have difficulty reading your last name. Mr. P., John P., all right, Mr. John P.
Hello, my name is John Parthenakis. I am a teacher at Riverbend High School, a coach at Niagara River High School and a youth coach. And my voting district, I believe I float at Smith Station, so.
Livingston District.
Okay. And I'm here to talk about middle school sports. You guys have put that on the agenda for a while, in particular, sixth grade middle school sports and allowing them to go on with the exception of football possibly. And I would like to thank you for your consideration on that. As a father of a son who's coming up into sixth grade next year, this is my last opportunity to kind of get that going. And personally, he has five friends that are coming up into sixth grade next year in middle school and are going to wrestle too. And on our youth team, we have 10 kids that are coming up into sixth grade that have been wrestling since they were five years old. So, those kids, you know, I think want to wrestle for the middle schools and they would appreciate the chance to do so. Now, since my son has been off into soccer now, I can tell you that there are plenty of other students who are going to be sixth graders next year for soccer as well that have been in clubs since they were five years old, particularly FFC, some of the other clubs in the area. And they're ready. They're ready to do it for their school, they're ready to represent their school, and they want to. Now, as a coach at Niagara River Middle School, I can tell you that I welcome sixth graders on the team, especially to fill some of the lower positions that we have not been able to fill in the past. There have been a lot of forfeits at the 75-pound, 85-pound weight class, and it gets pretty bleak around there when only one school in the whole county has a 75-pounder. Well, my son's going to be 75 next year, so he can fit right in there, and there's plenty of other students that can fit right in there too in sixth grade. It's not going to be an issue with supervision, and it's not going to be an issue with anything else. I can say as a middle school coach, it would probably put at most 10 kids on the team, additional kids on the team, and we welcome that since each team only has about 20 kids, and it's not very big in the first place. As far as soccer goes, I don't know how much additional, how many additional kids that would put on the team, but I know the kids that the coach would keep would be talented. And it's up to each individual coach to make cuts and keep kids based on their maturity level and what they're able to do. Thank you very much for your time.
Mr. Chairman, that's all of our speakers.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address the board? Anyone? Seeing none, we will move on to board member comments. 5.02. We'll start with Mr. Twig.
Well, a special thanks to the Cortland Drama Group. That was a real nice presentation. Also enjoyed all of the artists and the recognition this evening. I've only been around a couple of months, but I've been fascinated in every school I've been in, as well as our main office here with all of the artwork that's happening. Artists are plentiful in this neck of the woods or suburban area, depending on where you live in this county. But a special thanks to Spotsylvania High. I was able to visit them for a few hours this past week and meet some teachers, get a feel for what's going on. I met a bunch more of excellent educators. That's pretty fascinating to me, and with all of the technology and the special labs and classes they have, it's just fascinating to see what we're doing with what we have. We are accomplishing a lot. And to Mr. P., John, we've been kicking that idea around. I, for one, am in support of allowing sixth graders to move forward. I think as long as parents don't have trouble, there's no safety-related statistic that is negative enough to outlaw it. And so, as this dialogue progresses, I'd like to, I would hope that we can move forward and acknowledge that and accept those younger folks into our sports ranks. Plus, it helps in filtering out quality players as they get older. I'm aware of that. Lastly, and for the record, I am the seventh school board member who did not support that effort. I was not asked to sign that letter. If I had been asked, I definitely would have said no. Further, I would have advised everybody else who were potential signers to not sign it, simply because the essence of the issue was strictly individual, and it should have been handled one individual to another. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Twig. Ms. Grant.
Well, Happy Pie Day. I want to start with the issue that is not relevant or at hand. I would like to congratulate Spencer O'Neil. He is a student at Massaponics High School. I just want to read a little brief history on him because he is an amazing athlete. Spencer O'Neil has been a four-year varsity member of cross-country, a two-year varsity member of indoor track. Indoor has only been in the system since 2015, so that's why he's only been two years. A four-year varsity member of outdoor track. Spencer has been a captain for outdoor track twice, and in 2015 for indoor track, Spencer was runner-up in the state indoor championship, and in 2016, he is the indoor state champion. Spencer leaves a new school record at 6'9" in the high jump. He has also set a new facility and meet records during his two years in high school jump for indoor track. He has set a new conference 15 regionals and state record during his 2016 season. He won all three meets. He is 2015 outdoor track champion, and his goal is to be back-to-back champion in his event high jump, while also setting new outdoor track school records. Spencer has made all-area first team twice for indoor and once for outdoor track. He made all-conference three times for outdoor track. Having accomplished himself in sports, Spencer has also maintained a 4.45 GPA at Massaponics. Spencer is number five in his class, and he has taken a total of 12 AP courses in high school. He has been recruited by many prestigious Ivy League colleges, to include Yale, Princeton and the University of Pennsylvania. The naval economy also was recruiting him for both his academic and athletic accomplishments. Spencer is a gifted violin player with our school's orchestra maintaining first chair in all four years. He has been all-county four years in a row. Spencer is involved in his church at River of Life, and he does volunteer work with FCA and the lava club at school. So, I think we all should give Spencer O'Neil a round of applause for his accomplishments this year. To the other matter. The letter that six of us as individuals signed was composed by me and read at a local GOP meeting because I am a member, was a member of the GOP committee. We were as individuals, there was no school board action, but because our letter was completely misportrayed indirectly, I'm going to read it because it's very short. "It is with great disappointment and a heavy heart that we witnessed a public comments of one of your officers at the February 23rd Board of Supervisors meeting. Her rude injection of condescending remarks during Ms. Clark's comment time were out of order, mean-spirited, and demonstrated intent to intimidate and install a fellow citizen. The thousands of hard-working teachers of Spotsylvania County Public Schools are highly trained and highly educated and are a valuable resource of the citizens of Spotsylvania. For Ms. Swanson to say you shouldn't be teaching if you don't know anything in a public forum is reckless and damaging to all teachers in the community. Ms. Clark, as all of our employees, is highly regarded as part of a successful school system. As public servants and leaders, we are charged with the responsibility to support positively and success in the community. Does your whole committee hold this much contempt for our employees or just Ms. Swanson? We invite Chairman Ross and Vice Chair Swanson to join us at the next school board meeting and explain the committee's position on this matter, as well as education in Spotsylvania, and urge Ms. Swanson to make a public apology and attempt to correct these offensive statements." So, this letter was composed by me and had six individuals, or five other individuals back me up. That is all. There is no school board action, there was no vote, there was no group acknowledgement of the letter. It's just how we all feel. We wanted to support our teachers and support the fact that no one has right during public comment time to speak about that. When it was their comment time, there's plenty of right to say that. In Mr. King's comments, a comment was not private, it was overheard on the recording, on the video, so therefore it was public. It was a public comment, it was not a private comment. It was on recording, anyone who listens to the recording could hear it. And according in his, Mr. King's comment, that he made an attempt to contact us, his first attempt to me was an extortion to send a letter that was stolen out of my hand to the Freelance Star, which I subsequently sent. So, I also sent the email along with that so that the Freelance Star had record of that. So, that is what has happened, and that is our response to that matter, and I stand true to the fact that no one has a right to interrupt someone's public comment times. When someone wants to interact with us as a board, they have a right to do so without rudely being interrupted.
Thank you, Ms. Grant. Ms. Shelley.
Thank you, Mr. Braswell. First, I want to just remind everyone that next Tuesday, March 22nd, it's beginning at 6:00, we will have our second budget work session with our Board of Supervisors at the Holbert Building. And then, on April 5th, at Cortland High School, will be the town hall meeting for the budget, the county's budget. So, anything and everything county budget will be on April 5th, and that's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Ms. Blaylock.
Thank you, Mr. Braswell. I want to first say that I'm extremely jealous that Earring got to go first because Spencer's one of my favorite kids. But I appreciated you speaking about Spencer. He truly is a remarkable young man. If you know him, him and his family, they're great people. I happen to know him personally. He goes to my school, Massaponics, and we're just incredibly proud of not just his accomplishments on the track field, but just the kid he is and the leader he is in his class and his school. My son has the privilege to be one of his closest friends, and this is just an amazing young man. Truly, truly a special, has that it factor. So, we look forward to seeing where he's going to go in the future, and I really thank Ms. Grant for putting that together about Spencer because, to be honest, although I was jealous, I didn't get to say it first. You said it much better than I would have, so I appreciate that. We're very proud of you, Spencer. I want to thank Mr. Towery. He let me come out today to celebrate Pie Day. We, I got to pie the assistant principal at Thornburg. Yes, yes. You made it out, but we had, we had a good time. The math committee had put together a very clever way to celebrate the day and support their department, so that was, that was a lot of fun. Just a reminder, spring break, we're awful early this year, I know, is March 28th through the 1st, April 1st. I'm sure we're, we already have that down, but just as a reminder. Also, the Massaponics Award winners tonight, again, that's my school, congratulated Also, the Massaponix Award winners tonight, again, that's my school, congratulations to them and all the other schools and that wonderful performance that started us off this evening. It was just fabulous. It just amazes me, the talent we have in this school. And if you have not seen the superintendent's award winner, I ask every month, for those of you who might follow my social media, I ask and use that as my cover photo every month, and I put it up today, and I just stared at it. What a talent. I wish she was still here. I didn't realize that was her. I wanted to talk to her because this photo is, this picture is really unbelievable. So if you're in the room and can come up and look at it closer, or if you see it on my Facebook page, it's the cover photo. She's just a wonderful artist. So I really enjoyed that as well. And that's all I have, Mr. Braswell.
Thank you. Mr. Blaine.
I have a few comments that I'd like to make relative to activities locally. We recognize some outstanding performers this evening. But over the weekend, I had an opportunity to visit John J. Wright Educational and Cultural Center Museum, and they have an absolutely outstanding exhibit that just opened. It's going to be there through August 31st. It deals with African-American history in Spotsylvania County. The name of that is Wraps of Royalty. And if you have not been there, please take time to go. Take your children, take your, if you can, take a classroom. I think you'll be overwhelmed with the exquisiteness of this program, of this particular exhibit, and just the fact that this is a little-known gem and little-used privilege that we offer to people, and I encourage everyone to take time to go. Secondly, I might say that you can catch their, they have a website called JWJJWrightMuseum.org if you'd like to look up. They have a couple of videos there, and you can get a very nice overview of that particular program. I'm interested in the arts, as you know, and I had an opportunity on February 27th to listen to the fifth-grade elementary school choral ensemble from the District 15 here. And I was happened by chance to be there at 3:00 and heard the practice session before the presentation. And I was overwhelmed at that point, and it was so impressive to me that there are 15 different schools that participated, and it was the first day they had ever worked together. And you would have been impressed at the professional performance that they delivered to the audience. It was really spectacular. And I'd just like to compliment our staff on such outstanding results that you get from our boys and girls. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blaine. Dr. Meyer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to also say thanks to Dr. Baker and the finance staff.
If I can borrow Ms. Shelley's.
It's not always that you review budget, but this is not the budget. These are questions and answers, some 75 questions that staff, or 75-plus, that staff has compiled, you know, both, you know, questions that may be by us or by the county, but this gets into the detail par excellence. And I do want to say thanks for preparing this because it gives us a chance to exchange information with the county and answer their questions, and they answer our questions. So I'm looking forward to that, as we will be able to share some of that information that's in the binder when we have our work session on the 22nd. Also, congratulations to our students and staff on the fine arts presentation, both this evening and at, and when I see the word cultural à la carte, I want to translate that into Portuguese, which is so close, cultura à la carte, because it is an à la carte of the different cultures that we have here in Spotsylvania. Congratulations to the staff on the preparation. Ms. Graham, I'm going to steal one of your pieces. Congratulations to all of our administrators who are here this evening. Thank you for being with us.
Thank you, Dr. Meyer. I want to give Ms. Blalock an opportunity to address one more issue. Thank you.
The speaker about the sixth grade sports, I had your name, and it was separated, so I forgot to mention. I appreciate you speaking on that, and also you coaching. I had sons go through, and we appreciate what you do. That's coming up on the agenda items, so I hope you stay for that discussion, and I'll make my comments at that time, but I wanted to acknowledge that. Thank you.
I want to thank my colleagues for their comments, and I also want to thank both of our citizens that came up and offered their comments during public hearing or public comments. You know, I served honorably in the United States Army, and I served as a captain of infantry. I had a great opportunity to serve in a variety of different assignments. And one of the things that was hallmark that I always remember is swearing to defend the Constitution. And that means giving people their God-given right in this democracy to speak their mind and do it without being heckled and do it without being intimidated. I'm so delighted that I've had the opportunity to witness, both speakers come before this body, state their opinions on matters, whether we agreed with them or not, but they did it unfettered, and they did it without any semblance of intimidation. So as far as I'm concerned, I'm exceptionally proud of not only what this board does as a body to hear dissent, but to hear from our public. But as this board member is concerned, as an individual, I really don't care what my colleagues on this board chose to put their name on the letter or not. I put my name on that letter because I stand with an employee that has every right to state her opinion without being intimidated or without being chastised. And I'll put my name on it every time. I really don't care if someone feels that I'm a target for their attack. I didn't mind serving in the military to be myself a target of attack, and I don't mind serving on this body to stand with people that have a constitutional right to speak at a hearing. So that being said, I'll hold the rest of my comments, so I don't allow my motion to get too much into it. And we'll just move on to 6.01. The 6.01 board, excuse me, 5.03 Superintendent's Report, Dr. Baker.
That's okay, Mr. Braswell. I know that you would have liked to have skipped over this section. I wanted to, everything that I wanted to share, or several things that I wanted to share, was covered by some of our board members. But to Ms. Graham's initial comments, I was reminded that at the next school board meeting in April, we will be recognizing state winners at track, and so that will be further reinforced at the next school board meeting. I also, it shows that I'm not a Facebook friend. I'm one of the only people in Spotsylvania and throughout the country that is not one of Ms. Blalock's Facebook friends because I did not realize that she was posting my superintendent award winner's picture on her as her cover. So Ms. Daniels, at some point, I'm going to have to have a superintendent's blog or something that I can put up some of this good stuff. So it's been said, but. I also thoroughly, again, enjoyed cultural à la carte. It's such a team effort, and again, it's called cultural, but it's really become a part of our culture to promote, celebrate, reinforce the arts. And what I really liked about the performance, the great performance at the beginning of tonight, was when we talk about this age of assessment and outcomes in education, what's wonderful about the arts is we just witnessed an assessment. We just witnessed student performance. We witnessed the skills that went into it, the rehearsals, the preparations, and the outputs. And that's what I truly love about the arts, as well as our current technical education, is that their performances, their products are their assessments, and that was a great illustration again tonight. Ironically, the John J. Wright Museum was one of many elements or programs that we featured this past Thursday night with my parent advisory group. We, once a year now, will try to take that meeting on the road. And last year, we went to the Career and Technical Center. This year, we went to John J. Wright, and the small group of parents that were there were able to get a little bit of a taste of each of the very diverse and extremely important programs that we provide out at John J. Wright, including the museum. And I think for all of us that were there as staff, it's a reminder of what level of diverse needs are met every single day, hour by hour, in that school. And I want to applaud, sometimes we're only talking about now and in the future, I want to applaud few past board members, past administrators, the NAACP, the Sunday School Union, the former superintendent, folks that had a vision of what that school could become. And sometimes we talk about future visions, but that's a vision that is being realized, and we've continued to make the best use of that facility as possible over time. So wanted to share that as well, and there's many other things on action items for the agenda, so I will conclude there. Thank you.
Dr. Baker, thank you, and please forgive me for my oversight. I do have mad love for you, sir. 6.01 Board Committee Reports. Do we have any board committee reports? Okay, Mr. Blaine.
I have really two brief reports. On March 23rd, the first CGS, Commonwealth Governor's School Film Festival is scheduled at Riverbend High School at 7:00. And the event celebrates the creative talents our students have in the areas of film production, screenwriting, and acting, and that's really an invitation from the principal and the staff there to invite people to come and see what kind of production our CGS students are able to produce. Secondly, on behalf of the Career and Technical Center, the Skills USA Leadership and Skills Competition is scheduled for April 16th at the Fredericksburg Exhibition and Conference Center. This is a state competition, and people will be able to come in the morning, and you can actually see competition, about 1,200 students, I understand, will be there. Should be a very interesting Saturday. I'll remind people about it later, but it's a month and a half from now, and a month, I guess, probably. I think it's, you'll find it a very interesting experience. We talk about career and technical education producing students who are able to get a job right away. And last year, an attempt was made to provide that immediate opportunity. And again, that's scheduled for this year on June 7th. There will be a job fair for the graduates of our Career and Tech Center, and we're still looking for, we have room for a few more employers. If you're interested, we'd like to ask you to make an application and call Linda Binion at our staff here before March 31st, so we can make the necessary arrangements. But it's an opportunity for local employers to hire graduate students, many of whom have certificates in certain areas of expertise. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blaine. Any other committee reports? Ms. Shelley.
I don't have a report. I'm just going to say that tomorrow is our Special Education Advisory Committee meeting, so I will be attending that tomorrow. In the next meeting, I'll have a report.
Thank you, Ms. Shelley. Any others? Seeing none, we'll move on to 7.01 and 7.02. Dr. Martin, please.
On the consent agenda this evening of approval of the minutes of the February 22nd, 2016 regular meeting and donations which are usual and customary, staff asked that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Moved by Mr. Blaine.
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Meyer. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? Motion carries 7-0. 8.01 Replacement of HVAC Systems at RE Lee Elementary School. Mr. Hockaday, or I think it's Mr. Hockaday, right. Ms. Finley. Ms. Finley.
Good evening, Mr. Braswell, members of the board, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. This evening, I will be presenting along with Mr. Sean Hockaday, our Director of Maintenance. The approval of the FY 2016 Maintenance Capital Improvement Plan provides funding for the replacement of the HVAC systems for Robert E. Lee Elementary School. The project consists of replacement of the rooftop air handlers, packaged rooftop air conditioning, and rooftop ventilation equipment, boiler plant, removal of four-pipe classroom unit ventilators, provision of rooftop air handler for the cafeteria, rehabilitation, replacement of the terminal VAV, and heating equipment, and upgrades to the building automation system. The project was advertised on Eva, Virginia's statewide e-procurement website, and on the Division's purchasing website page. Bids were received on February 25th, 2016 as follows. E-Tech Mechanical Corp. bid was $1,479,950. Paramount Mechanical Corporation was $1,787,000. And Colonial Web Contractors came in at $1,832,352. The recommendation is that the school board accept the low bid of $1,479,950 submitted by E-Tech Mechanical Corp. to perform the work referenced in the above project. All of the bids, all of the firms' bid documentations were submitted in accordance with the instructions to bidders, and their qualifications met or exceeded the requirements set forth in this project. Thank you. And at this time, I'm going to ask Mr. Hockaday to step forward and present some additional comments regarding the budget for the project.
Thank you. Originally, when we proposed the RE Lee project in the CIP in '15, we had put an estimated amount in there, and then when revising that into '16 for the year 2017, that amount changed. The reason is because once we started the preliminary engineering and testing at that site, due to the age of that building, there's materials used during that time period that are no longer used anymore, and we found those, and we would like to get them out of the building. That is very expensive when you do find it, but this is probably the only opportunity that we have to do so. So in the CIP for '17, you will see a higher estimate than what was originally placed. The bid comes in lower than what the estimate is in the 2017 CIP. We will be talking about another project for Brock Road, and those funds that are left over from the CIP for this project for RE Lee will be used to cover an additional amount of work being done at Brock Road.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to accept the recommendation.
I'll second.
We have a motion to accept the recommendation for a replacement of HVAC system at RE Lee Elementary. It's IFB 02252016-1430 to E-Tech Mechanical Corporation at $1,479,950. It was seconded by, who did we, who seconded it?
Ms. Blalock.
Ms. Blalock. Ms. Blalock seconded. Properly motioned, seconded. Discussion. Mr. Blaine.
I have one related/unrelated question for you. I was in an exhibit one time, and the school folks were talking about this type of thing, but they developed a system that when, during the low time at night, they would, had some ice producers up on the ceilings of the roofs on the various places, and during the day, they used that to generate electricity somehow. Do we do anything like that? Have we ever looked at anything like that?
No, sir, we don't. There are systems, not a lot of them in this region, but there are systems that use absorbers and things like that to produce ice. Then basically, you melt the ice during the day for cooling. They do use some ice storage in trying to help produce power, but they're more on a larger scale, a very large complex. The nearest one I can think of that was in use is the old Freelance Star building in Fredericksburg. The problem with that, at some point during the day, the system has to completely shut down. It doesn't lend itself well for educational facilities, just because of the schedule that you have to follow.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussions? Any other questions or discussions? We'll call for the question that was properly moved and seconded. Let's go by roll call. Let's start with Ms. Graham.
Graham, aye.
Blaine, aye.
Twig, aye.
Braswell, aye.
Blaylock, aye.
Meyer, aye.
Shelley, aye.
Thank you. The motion carries 7-0. Moving on to 8.02, Replacement of HVAC Systems at Brock Road Elementary.
Once again, good evening. The approved FY 2016 Maintenance Capital Improvement Plan provides funding for the replacement of the HVAC system for Brock Road Elementary School. The project consists of the replacement of the packaged rooftop air conditioning and rooftop ventilation equipment, the boiler plant, rehabilitation and replacement of terminal VAV and heating equipment, and upgrades to the building automation system. The project was advertised on Eva, the Virginia statewide e-procurement website, and on the Division's purchasing website. Bids were received, once again, on February 25th, 2016 as follows. E-Tech Mechanical Corp. came in at $1,532,970. United Refrigeration of Virginia, it's $1,678,000. Chamberlain Mechanical Systems is $1,709,904. Colonial Web Contractors, $1,793,232. And then Southworth Mechanical Corp. came in at $1,981,151. The recommendation is that the school board accept the low bid of $1,532,970 submitted by E-Tech Mechanical Corp. to perform the work referenced in the above project. All of the firms' bid documents were submitted in accordance to the instructions to bidders, and their qualifications met or exceeded the requirements set forth in the project. And I do also want to note, this is the same vendor performing the work at Robert E. Lee, and they have provided proof to us that they can handle both projects concurrently. At this time, I would like to invite any questions you may have. Thank you.
We have a motion on the floor. Ms. Shelley makes a motion to accept the recommendation to replace HVAC system at Brock Road Elementary, IFB 02252016-1400, seconded by Dr. Meyer, excuse me, and at the price of $1,532,970 with E-Tech Mechanical Corporation. Discussion. Discussion. Go ahead, Ms. Shelley.
Um, there's not a large difference in the prices between the two, but is there, is Brock Road bigger than RE Lee? Is that why it's because Brock is a little bit bigger than RE Lee? Is that why it's a little bit more?
It's because it's larger, for one thing. It's also due to the fact, even though, even though RE Lee is older, Brock, Brock Road was built in '92. The, because of the units that are going back on that roof, they don't make that same existing style, there's some structural work that's going to have to be done for the new units to be able to carry the load, but yet keep a low profile, so they don't get above the parapet walls. Both projects, we're upgrading controls and getting rid of, getting rid of the pneumatic control system, which both were going to provide huge economic savings by doing so. But it's mainly because of the type and size of equipment that is at Brock Road compared to what is already at RE Lee, is for the cost.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Go ahead, Dr. Meyer.
With this, I noticed you said, you know, the VAV systems. Does that mean your controls as well, you're going to be upgrading all the controls?
Yes, sir, all the controls from the, from the building automation end all the way through to the terminal boxes, all controls.
That's what I suspected. Thanks, that's, because we need to bring those up to date.
Yes, sir.
Many thanks.
Any other discussion? We'll call for the question. We'll start on the other side. We'll start with Ms. Shelley, roll call, please.
Shelley, aye.
Meyer, aye.
Blaylock, aye.
Braswell, aye.
Blaine, aye.
Double aye.
Grant, aye.
Motion carries 7-0, or at least we, it might be 8-0, but 7-0.
That's when you got two people with blue vests or jackets right next to each other.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Hockaday, Ms. Finley, thank you. Moving on to 8.03, International Baccalaureate Program. Mr. Wolf.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Board, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. As the school board is aware, Spotsylvania County Public Schools has been in a two-year application and candidacy process of having Spotsylvania High School become an International Baccalaureate World School Diploma Program. We are pleased to announce that on February 23rd, 2016, Spotsylvania High School received authorization from the Chief School Officer of the International Baccalaureate Organization for inclusion into this organization. As part of this program, the Division needs to update current language in policy IGBI and policy LEB. It is the Administration's recommendation that the school board approves the first reading of the edits to policy IGBI and policy LEB as presented.
I will so move.
Motion moved by Mr. Blaine. Seconded by Ms. Blaylock, properly moved and seconded. Discussion.
Is there any reason we need to wait for a second reading on this? Because this is merely the addition of the language to include the IEB as part of our policy?
There is not, sir.
So, the Board could consider waiving second reading and giving approval?
Yes, sir.
If, Mrs. Blaylock, would you like to have the honors?
Yeah, everyone knows that I have been waiting on the IB program, so I get very territorial of it. Yes, let's move that we waive the first reading. We don't want to hold this up at all. Mr. Chair, I move that we waive the first reading.
Okay, we have, we have a motion by Ms. Blaylock to waive the first reading, seconded by Ms. Grant. Mr. Blaine, did you have discussion?
Chairman, I didn't intentionally mean to usurp.[987.12][987.12](laughter)
He said, "No harm, no foul." No harm, no foul.
I do have a question, if we could ask.
Okay, discussion, go ahead, sir.
Would you take just a couple of minutes and elaborate just slightly for those of us in the audience at home and so on? What in the world is the International Baccalaureate, and what, what's the advantage to our students because of that, of its presence?
Sure thing. The International Baccalaureate Program is actually a program that is recognized worldwide. And Spotsylvania High School, being through this entire process, their staff, they currently have 16 teachers who have been certified to be IB World School teachers. And IB is a curriculum that is very much rigorous, and it's very similar to AP, Advanced Placement, but the, the program being the, the World School, and the recognized around the world, should you have a student who takes an AP exam and is successful in that AP exam, much like an AP, depending upon the score, that can be recognized throughout the world.
And do you have any sense of how many students might be enrolling the first year it's offered?
Currently, we have two cohorts that are going on. We have a sophomore cohort that has 26 students that are in it, and we have a freshman cohort that is going on with 18 students at this time. That's our current students enrolled in the program.
Thanks very much.
Sure.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Dr. Baker.
Thank you, Ms. Braswell. I appreciate the question regarding the International Baccalaureate Program. About three years ago, I asked the principal and several members of the staff at Spotsylvania High School to consider the possibility of this program at their school, and I want to thank them tonight, because three years later, they have been awarded the Diploma Program that will not only be available to the students of Spotsylvania High School, but over time, we anticipate being available to all of our students at each high school, should they choose to be a part of that Diploma Program. And I like those folks, I think there may be several folks, or at least a few, from Spotsylvania High School. If they would stand, so we can thank them for their work. It took a great deal of work to get to this.[1136.71][1136.71](applause) In particular, they had to get trained. They had to go through a lot of trainings. They also had to do a lot of upfront work in terms of making sure that the school had the materials, and was really, it was approved. And I, I learned directly that the process of becoming a candidate is a lot easier than actually getting approved. And so, I congratulate them, and I thank the Board for your support, so that they could go through that process, knowing that you, as a school board, supported this.
Thank you, Dr. Baker. Dr. Martin.
Mr. Chairman, just a clarification. I think we were talking about waiving the second reading, not the first reading.
Waiving the second reading, okay.
Second, okay. Just wanted to clarify.
Second reading, yes. Okay, thank you. Let me, do we need to restate that, the motion, to make sure it's clear?
I think we just made the correction.
Okay.
Just make sure the second.
Properly moved and seconded. We're going to do our vote a little bit different this time. We're going to give Ms. Blaylock the opportunity to vote first, so when I call your name, you register your vote, please. Ms. Blaylock.
Blaylock, aye.
Mr. Twig.
Twig, aye.
Ms. Dr. Meyer.
Meyer, aye.
Mr. Blaine.
Blaine, aye.
Ms. Shelley.
Shelley, aye.
Ms. Grant.
Grant, aye.
And Braswell, aye. Carry 7-0, thank you. Moving on to 8.04, Middle School Athletics. To highlight, Mr. Wolf.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On December 14th, 2015, the presentation was delivered to the school board on the current status of middle school athletics. At that meeting, a request for continued research and discussion as to the inclusion and participation of 6th grade students was made. After soliciting information from surrounding school divisions, we discovered many of them do permit the participation of 6th graders in various sports offered. After consultation with the middle school principals, they welcomed the opportunity to more actively involve their first-year students. Beginning with the 2016-17 school year, and with the approval of the school board this evening, we would like to invite our 6th grade students to begin participating in all of our athletic programs, with the exception of football. This is the recommendation of the members of the Athletic Task Force as well. Therefore, it is the Administration's recommendation that the school board approves, beginning in the fall of 2016-17 school year, that we grant the inclusion of eligible 6th grade students into policy IGDAA Regulation 2, the eligibility for participation in interscholastic athletics.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. We have a motion on the floor. Moved by Ms. Blaylock, seconded by Ms. Shelley. Any discussion?
I do.
Let's start with Ms. Grant.
Just would like to reiterate, I can read it, I just want to get it out there, that there is no fiscal impact to the budget because of doing this.
No, this, this simply opens up the opportunity for our 6th graders to be included.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grant. Ms. Shelley.
And I just wanted to say, I like this idea. I've asked about it before, and I think it's appropriate that football is not included in it, and that's, I think, maybe like what the reason is, size of the students, and I think it's, it's an awesome way to get the 6th graders actively involved, more so in their middle school program. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shelley. Anyone else? Ms. Blaylock.
I have a couple of questions. I'll start by saying this has my support, but I want to go over a few things, just to clarify for myself. I don't have to ask you what the pros are, we all know, but talk to me about what the cons were, that the Athletic Task Force looked at, and have they all been addressed?
You mean for the overall athletic program?
By, including the 6th graders.
The, the largest concern was the, the size of the 6th graders coming in, and the number of spots for, yes, you have larger teams in different athletic sports across the board. I can't say that we solved the issue in regards to that competition, and whether or not 6th graders could replace anybody else, but we certainly have opened up the door to include them at this point. In middle school, they also have, besides the varsity team, if you will, that's at middle school, you have a fifth quarter for those students who may not have made the, I don't want to say the regular team, they're on the team, but to give those students who may not play in the, in the main game, an opportunity to have experience through that fifth quarter.
Yeah, I'm familiar. I'm not sure that, I'm not sure how much I agreed with football being left out. There's a lot of parents that would say that their child is, it's just that age is just, you just never know if they're going to be tall, small, what, but I've had both. I had one that was ready to play in 6th grade, and one that was a wrestler who was the 75-pound. So, it's, I think it's a good thing. I do worry, because in, in middle school, I remember this vividly, and to say I've been a middle school parent of a sport, I can't even count how many times. I feel like I have been on every sport that falls under the boys. Something that still concerns me is, they would always say, "Well, I can only take so many kids, because of how many uniforms we have." Is it still going to be that way, and it's just that you mix all three grades? Or is there any, does the 7th and 8th returning players get first dibs? Or is it just, every year is a new year, you all try out, however many uniforms we have is what is taken on the team? And let's say, for example, it is wrestling, and because of the different sizes that you need, there's more 6th graders than 7th and 8th graders that the coach wants to pick. It doesn't matter, this is just going to be, everyone tries out, whoever is the best gets the spot.
Correct.
And if we do it, it should be that way, but I'm just confirming how it's going to work.
Every year, that's, every year, that's why they do tryouts, in regards to that. So, I would hate to.
So, we're not buying new uniforms or adding to teams?
At this point, no, ma'am.
Yeah.
They're just competing for the same spot, as though a 7th and 8th grader would be going out at this.
And football was because of the size only?
There is a size difference that happens to be there, and there's a, with the 6th graders coming in.
Sometimes, sometimes.
Sometimes, right. And having been a middle school principal, I completely understand that some 6th graders come in, and they're, they look like they should be juniors or seniors in high school sometimes, you know? So, where others could come in, and they, they don't look that way. So, it was more of the bringing the students in. There is a concussion factor that we do worry about with the 6th graders coming in, and so it was better, the team felt, or not the team, but the Athletic Task Force, as well as speaking with the principals, that we exclude football at this time.
Yeah, I mean, and I agree, it was, it's a big move for us to include 6th grade. It's been a conversation for a few years, but sometimes I just feel, if we're going to include, let's just include it. And again, you may have a lot of 6th graders being cut, but the 7th graders, I mean, the 6th graders that are ready to play football, and have played club ball, and on these teams, would make the team. And so, just, just a thought on football. I completely understand how many kids go out for football. I vividly remember, and the 70-something kids went out for my son's team, when he was in 7th grade, and they took 32. So, you already are cutting quite a few. However, that's the only thing, I'm not sure how much I agree with excluding football. And I think that's something that continues to be looked at, because why would we leave out, let's, let's just do it all, or don't do it at all? Because if, the way you just explained it, you're not going to make the team if you can't cut it anyway. So, if you do have a 6th grader come in that happens to be taller than everybody else, and somebody who's already been playing, or maybe even smaller, but they're fast and they're skilled, and they've been doing it a long time, and they know how to play safely, and the coach needs to use them, so I think that the football needs to be looked at.
Sure.
Also, did we get any community input on this?
Only that we, I received a few additional emails, but we did not get a whole lot of community input on it.
So, there's no survey that went out, asking the community if we wanted 6th grade or anything, which, I mean, from what I hear as a board member, I've only heard, "Yes, we want it."
Just, there wasn't a survey that went out. There was just a few of having had the conversation through board meetings, that individuals had reached out to say that they are in support of, of that.
And the middle school coaches and are ready to go on this, and they support it as a whole?
We have our principals who were, that I met with, who ended up speaking in regards to this. I have not heard back from any of the coaches in regards to not approval of this. There were some coaches reached out to go ahead and say, "We definitely support having 6th graders coming up on our teams." And much like Mr. Parthenakis that you heard come up tonight, in order to go ahead and talk about that.
Yeah, and I, and I agreed with his comments, and he's exactly right on wrestling. And the, so, in these discussions with principals, none of them, all the middle school coaches said no to football?
I don't think that we went out to solicit middle school.
I didn't ask middle school football coaches?
No, ma'am, no. That was from the Athletic Task Force, and from speaking with the principals in regards to that.
Yeah, that's just something we might do, is just, see, I just, I just don't, don't know how I feel, and maybe it is the best thing, but I'm not sure how I feel about leaving out one sport, or I really don't, because, like I say, if they're too small, they wouldn't make it anyway, right? So, I think it's a thought we need to look at, and maybe if y'all could revisit that, and possibly talk to the coaches, and of course, if they all came back unanimous, "No, it's just too young, we don't want that." Of course, I support it, but I just feel like, for the little football players out there, they're going to be, they're going to be saying, "Hey, I'm ready to go, too." So, if we think everybody else is ready to go, let's give the football players the same, that same opportunity.
Happy to explore that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other comments? I just want to have a few. I'm actually delighted that we have come to this resolution. I see our, one of our middle school coaches nodding his head yes out, out there. Continue to nod your head yes, I'm with you. I, my concern is not necessarily football, Ms. Blaylock. My concern is sports for women. A lot of, it's a hormone factor also, and a lot of young ladies reach maturity a lot faster than the young, than the young men, and because of, they're able to compete, competitive... of, they're able to compete competitively at the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade level with their peers, whereas in football, the testosterone factor is a factor, where you have an eighth grader that is a hundred and a hundred and fifty pounds, and you got a, sixth grader's a hundred and fifty pounds, the power of the hundred and fifty pound eighth grader that has fully matured is significantly different. And I'm just saying that, not to be flippant, I'm just saying that as a former football coach myself, and I did coach at the middle school level for football, and there is a difference in power in that case. Now, we can both name out some sixth grade individuals, some of them are playing college ball right now, that came out and they probably could have competed, but they were, they were, they were far, few and far between. So I don't disagree with what you're saying. No, I'm not, I'm not arguing the point on should there be an exclusion entirely, I just think that at this particular point, I think it's a great step forward. That's my argument, and would you like to return?
Yeah, because you just made my point for me, that's exactly right. The couple that we do know that were in sixth grade that were standouts and ready to go would make the team.
Dr. Baker?
No, I was just going to say, I know that Mr. Wolf, I thought that one of the things, one of the reasons why, holding back on football, there were some other divisions that currently only exclude football at the sixth grade level, but I think it also goes to the point of both of our board members, is that as we move forward, I'm not done, I hadn't made my point, it's going to be a good one, I promise. I think that you do want to get these tryouts under your belt, you know, it's, I think, not having, I came from a school division prior that had sixth grade sports at every, you know, every sport had sixth grade, and so I also agree that that ultimately does come down to a parent's choice, and that does come down to the same competition. However, I know that with the increased concern about concussions and those sorts of things, that having a year where we get the sixth grade sports in there and then evaluating it, maybe at this time next year, might be something to consider.
What is different from this from before as well, in regards to football, this, the policy that you are voting on tonight, also stated that sixth graders prior could not be managers, they could not help out with a team, it was a matter that sixth grade could not do any of that. It does allow and does permit sixth graders to participate in a management style with the team that was different from before. But again, very, very happy to go ahead and explore the issue of sixth grade participating in football further, if that should be the board's wish.
Any other, any other discussion? Dr. Meyer?
I just think that, you know, with what has been presented this evening, there's really nothing that prevents the board from the future for being able to consider what Mrs. Blaylock's point is, you know, that if we have students who are capable of playing, you know, at that level, you know, that's something that we certainly can consider, so, but I, you know, I know if we had a motion on the floor, but I think let's move on with the, with the item.
Okay, taking, that we have a motion on the floor that's been properly seconded. Did you want to make another comment, Ms. Blaylock?
No, I'm waiting to vote.
Okay, she's waiting to vote, okay. So we have a motion on the floor that's been properly seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? Hearing none, motion carries seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your chairman may ask a technical question over an earlier vote. The motion to approve the I B installation had a first and a second, and then there was a second motion about not requiring a second reading of that. And I don't think we, we had one vote, and I want to be sure that we actually voted on the basic motion.
On that, Mr. Blaine, I was corrected in my, when I read the motion and the second, and Mr. Dr. Martin asked me if I meant second reading, and he indicated that the correction would be adequate, because I did ask if it needed to be restated.
So that the motion then read?
It was second reading.
To approve the first and second reading at the same time, is that what you're saying?
Approve the first, waive the second.
Correct. The action was to waive the second, approve the first.
Okay, fine.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, moving on to eight point zero five, appointment of citizen member of the local finance board, Ms. Gaines.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, school board members, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. This evening's staff is recommending that the school board appoint Ms. Williams to serve as a citizen rep on the school's local finance board for a term of two years, starting March twenty sixteen to end April twenty eighteen. As you are aware, the purpose of this board is to review the investment results of our other post-employment benefit trust fund. Thank you for the opportunity this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Gaines. I believe that Ms. Graham has a motion.
I move that be approved, Ms. Jackie Williams. Nomination to the local finance board.
I'll second.
So we have, we have a motion to nominate Ms. Jackie Williams, and seconded by Mr. Blaine. Oh, Mr. Twig, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Oh, the blue suit, okay. One with the blue, one with the bow tie, one with the, her regular tie, okay. So it's properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. Call for the vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? Hearing none, motion carries seven zero. Thank you. Middle school science textbook adoption, Ms. Bulaco.
Good evening, Mr. Braswell, members of the board, Dr. Baker, Dr. Martin. In accordance with our local textbook adoption policies, Spotsylvania County Schools has reviewed and selected resources for middle school science. For sixth grade science students, McGraw-Hill Integrated Science is designed with hands-on investigations, rigorous science content, engaging real-world applications. Integrated Science is a comprehensive solution that couples both inquiry lessons with the next-generation science standards and dynamic digital resources. Pearson Interactive Science is being considered for both life science and physical science in the seventh and eighth grades. Students receive an interactive science notebook text with scaffolded inquiry-based learning. The digital path is complete with an online course featuring video, interactive simulations, directed virtual labs, and innovative personalized learning solutions. It's administration's recommendation that we purchase both the Pearson and McGraw-Hill texts for our middle school sciences.
I will so move.
Say it.
Thank you, Ms. Bulaco. Moved by Mr. Blaine, seconded by Ms. Graham. Any discussion? Ms. Shelley.
I have a couple of questions. First of all, when was the last time the science standards were updated? Was that just recently? Because I know they started, had a new test about two, three years ago.
Actually, they're beginning the public comment period for science, so this time next year, we should have some revised standards.
So my concern with the textbook is, is it going to meet the new standards, or should we hold off until the new standards are adopted, and then we purchase the books?
That's a great question, and we've negotiated with both Pearson and McGraw-Hill to get their updates on the online version, and because the Pearson books are consumable, they will give us any updates with those as well.
Okay, that's good, because I, we use, at my school, we use the Pearson books in there, and the software that goes with them is wonderful, which just also makes me question training. Are McGraw-Hill and Pearson going to come in and show our teachers how to use the resources that go with the textbook?
Yes, we've negotiated that as part of this package, so it'll be professional development, both to start the teachers off and then to revisit after they get their feet wet with the materials.
Thank you. Mr. Twig.
Okay, real quickly, I'm sure it's a budgeted item. How many books do we buy a year, and where are we in our book purchasing budget?
I appreciate you asking that, Mr. Twig, because I think the monies that were allocated for the resources that I've been coming before the board, those were allocated by our county's budget and finance committee, their fiscal year fifteen carryover funds. So this money that we're using to update a lot of our curricular materials this year are from that pot of money. It is not budgeted in our local budget. We have a small pot to kind of update or replace any outdated materials or materials that are in disrepair, but this is from that carryover.
Great, and then where are we in the expense of the county budget, and then are we going to allocate or spend everything that you have in those two pots this year? And when does the year end?
Yes. All of these materials that I'm coming before you with are, they have to be spent out by June thirty, so we will receive all the materials that we purchase by June thirtieth, that will finish this money out. The local budget is almost completely finished with just the things, the, you know, additional resources we need from year to year for enrollment and et cetera.
And then can we assume that next year, the county fund won't be there, or does that reoccur?
This particular pot of money will not be there. That, yeah, that was just funds that we received in November.
So you'll try to zero, get as close to zero as you can, right?
Absolutely.
Thank you for everything you're doing.
Thank you, Mr. Twig. Ms. Graham?
Just to clarify Mr. Twig's question, this was the carryover from the prior year that the board voted to be spent on instruction, and these are the instruction funds that we are now spending up, which the Board of Supervisors has approved already, which happened last year and was in the minutes, and clearly a path that is public that anyone could have accessed.
Thank you, Ms. Graham. Mr. Blaine?
My concern is, I guess, maybe twofold, maybe more than that, but more and more we're learning about flip classrooms and so on, and we have already held electronic materials, and they're going to be updated and so on. So I'm assuming, are we actually leasing the electronic books?
The technology.
Annual fee for each, each book, is that how that?
Well, actually, you pay for a license that lasts for seven years of the adoption cycle, so you pay that one time, and then that will be good for the life of the adoption.
How much, how often will it be a requirement that this, operating that flip classroom idea, where the student, teacher's going to be saying to the class, we want you to go home, look at this material on your Wi-Fi, et cetera, et cetera, in the obvious place that I'm going?
Sure.
What kind of a problem is that for those areas that don't have that access?
And I appreciate you, you bringing that up, and the, the good thing is that there are hardcover materials, but additionally, if a student was to take something home, all of these modules and such are downloadable, so they could be downloaded onto a device and used in a different environment that did not have internet access.
So they could download at school, put it on their laptop, or their cellphone, or whatever?
Yep.
Oh, great. Well, one final question, I would like to have somebody do a little survey and give us some sense of how many students are really in that situation where they really don't have access to Wi-Fi. I've talked about it a number of times, and I've gotten a number of different responses from responsible people that vary significantly, so that would, if you could do that, I think, and that would help us as we talk to the county, too, because they have, going to have to play a major role somehow in ultimately getting cable laid throughout the county, and that's a massive, don't let me scare my friend here, but.
It sure is.
Mr. Blaine, I don't know if I should interrupt you on that, I believe that's, that would be considered new business, so let's, let's redact that statement for now, and did you, I didn't want to interrupt you, did you finish your comments?
No, 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 I just, it was an add-on to my comment.
Okay.
Well, I was, as it pertains to access, and I think we can keep it under the topic of access to curricular materials that are online, that are associated with this, so I'll keep it under there, so it's not new business, but I think there is an intent, and that instruction is working with technology and communications, to put together that type of outreach in terms of a survey, or other ways of trying to get a clearer picture of exactly how many students are going to have difficulty with that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Baker. We have a motion on the floor, properly moved and seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? Hearing none, motion carries seven zero.
Thank you.
Moving on to eight point zero seven, adoption and purchase of math computer adaptive resource. Ms. Bulaco, continue, please.
Thank you very much. Our math data indicates that many students lack basic fact fluency that will help them realize success in higher mathematics. With support from our Algebra Readiness State Grant Funds, we propose the purchase of Reflex. Reflex is an online computer adaptive resource used to build fact fluency in mathematics. Each student sets an individual, gets an individualized experience, and teachers have access to powerful reporting tools to monitor progress. Students will have access anytime, anywhere to this highly engaging, web-based instructional tool. It's administration's recommendation that the school board adopts and purchases Reflex for all middle and elementary schools.
I'd like to make that motion, Mr. Braswell.
Ms. Shelley is making a motion, and we have a second.
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Blaylock. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Ms. Blaylock.
I just have a question for you. I strongly support this, I'm very familiar with this, but my second graders have been doing it all year, so how is it we're adopting today? Just help me understand.
The schools took, many of the different schools took this on themselves, and it is, hoping, you know, and we negotiate as a county purchase, it's much less money. So with the Algebra Readiness Funds, we do have additional material and supply funds, so I'm absorbing that within Algebra Readiness to take that burden off the school, individual schools.
Yeah, this is, this is great. This is a great program, and clearly helps the child learn their math facts. Mine are eight-year-olds, so I mean, it's just been a huge useful tool, and they come home with their little printed-out password, it's on the refrigerator, and they just go on the laptop and do it every night, and they play against the other kids in their class, so it's been really a lot of fun in our house, so glad to hear that this is taking off, because it certainly works.
Ms. Shelley.
Thank you. And what, is it only elementary, is it elementary, middle?
Elementary and middle school, because it's Algebra Readiness, algebra typically happens before the ninth grade, and these funds have to be spent preparing students for algebra, so it is one of the guidelines within that grant.
Well, then I'm going to agree with Mrs. Blaylock, because I have seen it used, and from the teacher's side as well, and the reports are wonderful, to give you an idea of, just you can see the growth immediate, you just pull a report and there's the growth. It's, it's a wonderful program, I'm glad we're looking at this, we're doing this.
Thank you, Ms. Shelley. And Ms. Graham?
I just want to concur that I'm happy that we're doing this, since middle school math is one of our target areas that we want to focus on, and this is a wonderful example of us being fiscally conservative and saving some money to get the program in bulk and spreading it across our middle schools, and increasing our target area, and enforcing our strategic plan, all at the same time.
There we go.
Well, well said, Mrs. Graham. We have a motion on the floor, it's been properly seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposes? Hearing none, that motion carries seven zero. Nine point zero one, we have informational items, Ms. Flannard, are those customary? Moving on to ten point zero one, any unfinished business, unfinished business, seeing none. Ten point zero two, new business. I like to bring up a piece of new business for consideration. I received a letter from a constituent, they were inquiring as to the possibility of having graduations conducted outdoors in the stadium. Their concern was that the number of tickets that are available in our current venue were inadequate, especially when you have families that are, that went through divorces, or things of that nature, and you're trying to split tickets, and have a variety of different people to celebrate what we consider the crowning moment for young people as they matriculate through Spotsylvania County Schools. So I bring that up to the board, because I, for one, find it So, I bring that up to the board because I, for one, find it an interesting thing to consider. And I'm hoping that because it's March and graduations are a couple of months away, that we would have enough time to consider it. But I don't know all the logistics that are involved in order to make that happen. So, I just bring that up as a point of discussion, and I would love to poll my colleagues and hear their comments and opinions on that. And then we could make a course of action to consider what we should do. Ms. Graham and then Mr. Blaine.
I would like to hear about this as well, since I graduated from Cortland High School in this county, obviously. If a lot of the people that still work in this county were still working there when I graduated from there, we graduated outside. And we had a lot of tickets, and we had a less amount of tickets if there was a rain and we had to go inside. So, we had a rain plan in place. And so, I'm all for researching this outside graduation because I preferred it outside. I've now been to it inside as a school board member, and I participated in it outside, and I preferred it outside. So, if there is something that we can look into, obviously, we have to make sure that the facilities are up to par and ready for that amount of traffic and all of the other things that have to do with that, that other bar members have faced in the past. But I would prefer it there. But as Barron said, we have not had a report as to all the aspects of it. So, I would be interested in hearing about that.
Thank you, Ms. Graham. Mr. Blaine and then Ms. Blalock and then, well, Ms. Shelley.
My only comment is that in my former life, we ran into this, and we had to move away from outside because of rain. And it was such a hassle, we just decided to keep it inside all the time. And it, it does have the limitations, of course, but at the last minute, you have a problem and it's just that pain, at least in my own experience. And I'm open to the discussion. I'm not saying that.
Thanks, Mr. Blaine.
Thank you, Mr. Blaine. Ms. Blalock.
Thank you, Mr. Braswell. Well, my first year on the board was the last year we did outside at Cortland High School. I will never forget it. And it would be very hard for me to support outside again. It was, it was almost, it was a nightmare, but it was, the, the situation this day was it was nine o'clock in the morning. So, you would think it would be cooler, but for some reason, it was so hot. We became very, very concerned about the young and the elderly, and we were passing out water bottles. They were bringing in fans. And I don't think there was, there was at least eighty percent of the graduates with their hat off as a fan. We were dripping. And it wasn't that we're all scared of heat, but it was a dangerous heat. It was an, do you remember this? And that was the last year that they made a very final decision. And I remember vividly the superintendent, the my fellow school board members cabinet talking about it at length. I don't have the history Dr. Meyer has, but I have about ten years of history on them. I've not missed a graduation since 2008 at this, in this high, in this county, except for one that was after Mass upon X. That's because I went to dinner with my own child who graduated. And we've done every one of them indoors except that one. When you said you had one letter from constituent, honestly, Mr. Braswell, I have already heard from so many people, the question's always out, and this is such a good discussion to have. This was a very good idea to bring it up because it's very, it's very much on the minds of people in community. They would ask why we didn't do it at the Expo Center. I remember looking at the Expo Center. One of the biggest problems is people say, and it was, it was horribly expensive. It was a big, how much is it now? It was, I thought it was a lot more than that when we looked at it. But a bigger problem at the Expo Center is there was no tiered seating. And so, there, it was, looking at it, and this was long before this cabinet or anybody, and we just could not figure out a way to make the Expo Center work. I know it seems easy. It's big enough, and it is. The Mary Washington facility was not large enough and didn't accommodate the parking. We don't have a church large enough in the, because when you're, when you live, I lived in Dallas for eight years, and they go to the big churches because they have those huge facilities. We have a lot of our Northern Virginia go to the Verizon Center or whatever. We don't have anything because then we're asking people to travel to see their own child graduate. So, we try, we want to keep them in their community or within a reasonable distance of driving. And to, I, I remember we spent probably three years, years ago, looking at every facility, all the outdoors. We looked about doing, we looked at doing outdoors again. But the, another problem we had was, is in Spotsylvania County, is we do five graduations in five high schools. Two are going to be on Friday night, three are on Saturday. If it rains on Saturday, you got three rainouts back to back to back. And it is a scramble. The best thing we ever did was the live, live streaming. That is the best thing we have ever done. But I can respect having so many graduates. I have a graduate this year that it is, when you have, whether it's multiple families, two, two households, or just a large extended family. When you take how many kids I have just alone, you know, if you have siblings. So, there is a problem because we do have to restrict the number of tickets to, sometimes in some cases, like Riverbend and Mass upon X, it's four, for the actual room where the child is, is walking across that stage. And then we accommodate, oh, is it three? Three at Riverbend, I think it's four at Ponix, maybe three at Ponix. And then we have the overflow in the audience, and then we try to put some overflow in the libraries in some places. But there is so much conversation about this, and I really am glad Mr. Braswell brought it up because every year the conversation happens because it's a new set of parents that have not heard these conversations. So, it's important we keep telling them why, because it's so hard for them to understand, why are we just not in the Expo Center? It just makes no sense. But there are so many factors. The outdoor brought so many challenges that last time that we just could not do it outdoors again. And heat and rain being a factor, but we were in a situation where I do wonder how enjoyable that day was, that the bleachers had become incredibly hot. And you're still at a very far distance, making it feasible for people to actually see their graduate and get close enough to get their pictures and all across the stage. I felt like when we brought it in at Cortland, people were happier. I haven't heard a complaint about that other than restriction of tickets. That is the only thing. So, that's what I know about it. I know I've been on the board, I'm senior member on this board, but Dr. Meyer may could shed some more light as he has been around a lot longer than I have doing these. But in the past nine years, that's why we don't do it. That's why we don't do the Expo Center. That's why, and there's no other facility. And I look at Mr. Wolf as, as the director of that. There is no other, we've, we continue to look. It wasn't just nine years ago. I mean, we've looked because I've talked to you about it. Yeah, I've, I've.
It was fifty-four thousand dollars for all five high schools. It was slightly over ten thousand dollars per high school.
Yeah, that's the number I remembered. It was around fifty-four thousand dollars to graduate the five high schools.
It was if U of W, but they weren't.
Yeah, and you, you're, yeah, and, and University of Mary Washington just had the facility to get them inside. So, that's kind of where it is. It's not saying that it's an absolute no to outside and I'm not willing to look at it, but it just hasn't been something that's very feasible or comfortable at all in the past. And if you rain, have a bad rain day, and you've got your three schools graduating back to back, you're done. I mean, scrambling for that backup plan and all these people who planned on being there are now trying to get into an auditorium or possibly going home. So, it's not the best, the best situation probably because we do restrict tickets, but that's, that's what I know. That's the history I know.
Mrs. Blalock, I can't resist. All we need frankly is a covered baseball stadium, and we'd be in perfect shape.
That is spelled B-L-A-I.
Okay, we're going to, we're going to move on with that. Did, Dr. Meyer, did you have any? And then we're going to-
Mrs. Blalock summarized, you know, the, the different pros and cons. I'm not opposed to looking at it because we do have a lot of parents out there and, and we do need to help them understand the pros and cons. And I think, you know, it would help to put it down as to the pros and cons. You covered a lot of the cons. And because it, we had moved inside because of the weather and, and also considering, you know, senior citizens, all the, the issues that go with that. I think the biggest thing that helped with moving inside was establishing video streaming also from, to the auditoriums and to the commons areas so that there are other venues where parents could have access. And doing the live video streaming for those grandparents who could not come or those members who are over, of their families who are overseas and serving, that they can be able to be present and see their son or daughter, you know, graduating when they're, when they're serving our country. So, but I'm not opposed to, you know, looking at it again. It's just I'm not, I'm not parvee or party to or know of a facility here in Spotsylvania County or in this area where we could host, you know, of our size, you know, without short of going to Richmond or going to the Verizon Center. And I don't think that exists. But I'm not opposed to, you know, us taking another look at it and putting down the pros and cons.
Thank you, Dr. Meyer. Ms. Shelley.
Well, I was going to say pretty much the same thing that Mrs. Blalock said, knowing that if it's outside with the weather, and as Ms. Graham said, that they would, they had an alternate plan to come inside. Well, if, if you can get ten tickets, if it's outside, what's going to happen when it goes inside? Who's going to not be able to go in? So, that could be, that could be a nightmare. And with, and as Ms. Blalock said, with the heat and, and it, you know, June, it could be seventy degrees, it could be ninety-five. And with our elderly and our, and our young children, and those bleachers are metal. And, and they would be very hot for the visitors and guests. But a larger venue, absolutely. I mean, I'm, I'm still willing, willing to look, to see, you know, look at the pros and cons, but I, I wish we had a bigger venue. I also have a graduating senior this year as well. And it would be wonderful to be able to say, "Come on." But, you know, right now, what we have, it's say, "Okay, no, just you're going to watch it on video or stay there or stay at my house and watch it on video." Of course, everybody's welcome to the house, but, so that's something that we need to be, you know, I, I love that, that it has brought up, it was brought up. This is a good conversation.
Well, I, from what I heard from everyone, they brought up some really good points, pro and con. And what, when I brought it up, I wanted to bring, have the public also have an opportunity to kind of weigh in on it. And what I wanted to ask the board if they would consider, and I don't want to try to create a lot of work for staff, but if they could provide a short information briefing at our next meeting and that we encourage our citizenry to come out and voice their concerns one way or the other. And I don't even know with that short a period of time if we could make a decision to make a change this year. But it, to me, it's just something that, like Ms. Blalock said, is, you know, it gives the public an opportunity to understand why we do what we do. And sometimes that's just as important in the process, even if you have to say no, people understand why. And so, my, oh, go ahead, Ms. Blalock.
I would just say that I would ask that this board not put that on cabinet this year for one reason. Even though it's two months, they've already probably met with the fire marshals. This is far underway. I'm already asking how many tickets and it's with what's on our plates right now, we're already booked. I just feel like we would just be bombarding and overwhelming to open up something like trying to move all five graduations, which is going to be around eighteen hundred to two thousand kids that we're going to graduate probably. That is just a random number, but that has to be about somewhere. To ask staff to, to look at that by the June tenth graduations, just because it seems like a lot of time, but it really isn't because things are already rolling so, and I know that because I know how early they meet with the fire marshals and everybody gets together and they, there's just these big, huge plans for traffic, how many deputies we need, safety, and all of that is underway. If we want, and I'm not opposed to what you're saying, but I would just suggest we open up that conversation, and if we're going to ask the public, ask them for next year. If, if something, if outside, that, you know, this community says to this, if the community comes to me and says, you know, Amanda, I really want them to start being on the football stadium at Mass upon X, and the overwhelming community wants that, then that's something this board needs to look at. But I would just ask this board not to do that to the superintendent cabinet this late in the ballgame. It just, it's way too late.
I concur with you, Ms. Blalock. I, I would love to have an opportunity to study it for future years. And that way, the, we know that the public had a chance to weigh in. We presented them the facts as it pertained to the, the problem, or at least the perceived problem. And we, as a board, can articulate why we do what we do. So, I mean, that would be my motion. Ms. Graham?
I just wanted to add that looking at it for the next time, I totally concur. And also, we could look on the impact of, you know, if it was a couple of weeks earlier, if we got into calendar discussions later on and, and were able to graduate our seniors two to three weeks earlier, if that would make an impact on the average. I know it's Virginia and you can't ever count on the weather, but, you know, mid-May might be a little different temperatures than June, so.
That's a good point. Mr. Blaine?
I just suggest that we drop this at this point and, and bring it up in the fall and when it's a more timely thing for us to consider.
Okay, so, I guess, I guess what I'm, I'm saying is, what I would consider doing is withdrawing a motion and bringing it back up in the summer time to have a discussion where we can engage and, and have an opportunity to roll our sleeves up and do what's right by the public and do what's right by the division. So, I'll withdraw that, that motion. Thank you for engaging me in the discussion. It was something that was weighing heavy on me, and I appreciate everyone's comments. Thank you. Moving on to closed meeting or eleven point zero one. It is all that the board conduct a closed meeting for the following purposes. Consideration of candidates for employment, assignment, promotion, demotion, and discipline of employees or resignation of employees who have a contractual commitment to the board as permitted by two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A one of the Code of Virginia. We have a motion. Mr. Braswell, Mr. Chairman, pick up item eleven point zero two as well. Oh, and eleven point zero two, thank you. Thank you. We have a motion to go in a closed session. So, moved? Moved by Dr. Meyer, second.
Aye.
Seconded by Mr. Blaine. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any oppose? Hearing none. Motion carries seven zero. Go back into open session by Ms. Shelley and seconded by Ms. Graham. All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? Hearing none. Motion carries seven zero. We are back in open session. Certification of closed meeting. Whereas the Spotsylvania County School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this school board that such a closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Spotsylvania County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under this chapter and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting. Have a motion to certify the closed session meeting. So, moved, Mr. Chair? Moved by Dr. Meyer, seconded by Mr. Blaine. Roll call vote, starting with Ms. Graham.
Graham, aye.
Blaine, aye.
Blaine, aye.
Braswell, aye.
Blalock, aye.
Meyer, aye.
Shelley, aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Dr. Martin, if you would.
Motion from the closed session is that the board, the school board accepts the recommendation of the superintendent for personnel appointments, assignments, resignations, and retirements as presented in closed meeting and permitted by section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A one of the Code of Virginia.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion.
Ms. Shelley made a motion, second.
Second.
Second by Dr. Meyer. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? Hearing none. Motion carries seven, zero. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Michelle, a sec. Second by Ms. Grant. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposes? Motion to adjourn has been approved.
It worked okay.
This meeting is closed.